Okay, we're gonna start with the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs at this time. For committee members, we have a hard stop on this hearing at 5:30 PM. I just want to make sure that that's noted prior to us starting. As far as questions, for the second round, I will be prioritizing questions from any members from the Budget and Appropriations Committee. And again, we're going to be stopping at 5:30 PM. Director Tatum, whenever you're ready, you can start your presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Cohen, Vice President Middleton, Chairwoman McCray, and honorable members of City Council. My name is Elizabeth Tatum, and I serve as the Acting Chief Recovery Officer for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. I am pleased to once again appear before you to provide an update on the American Rescue Plan Act and then also offer a brief summary on the FY26 budget for the Opioid Restitution Fund. Before I start my presentation, I'll offer a few remarks on our progress. This July, we will mark four years since the creation of the Recovery Office and the start of ARPA implementation in Baltimore City. We met the federal obligation deadline of December 31, 2024, and we ensured that every dollar of this city's $641,170,126 ARPA allocation was committed in compliance with U.S. Department of Treasury rules. Seventy percent of funds have been expended. They are on the ground and making a difference in our communities. As you might imagine, briefly summarizing ARPA accomplishments is a challenge because of the scope and scale of our portfolio, so I'll mention just a few of the milestones we've celebrated in April and May of this year. The city broke ground on the new Congressman Elijah Cummings Recreation Center, which will serve residents of the Curtis Bay and Brooklyn neighborhoods. The mayor and governor cut the ribbon on a new 100-unit building that will provide high-quality, affordable housing for seniors in Park Heights. We welcomed a new cohort of five Black-owned businesses that are receiving technical assistance and grant funding through the Downtown Boost Program. And we celebrated the completion of the Direct Care Worker Relief Program, which provided $500 relief payments to 3,163 frontline workers. ARPA funds have made a difference in the day-to-day lives of our neighbors, both as the city fought its way through the pandemic and then advanced our recovery. I want to acknowledge the members of the Recovery Office team for their dedication to the work and commitment to the mission of our office. I would also like to thank our Deputy City Administrator, Shamaya Kearney. She set the standard of excellence for our office over the last four years and charted the course that our office continues to follow. And with that, I'll start my presentation. Next slide, please. A reminder that we have a website, and we are very active on a number of social media channels, and those are good places to go to learn about where we're at on spend and on our progress. Next slide, please. This is the organizational chart for our office. We have one vacancy as of February 24, 2025. Otherwise, we are fully funded for 11 FTEs, and that does include one full-time project manager for the Opioid Restitution Fund. Next slide, please. As I shared, all funds have been fully obligated. As of the end of April 2025, $443.4 million have been expended. I will note that ARPA expenditures have increased by 75% since our annual budget hearing last year, and our spend percentage is consistent with other cities. So as of January 2025, 77% of cities with populations of 250,000 or more had 70% or more of their ARPA funds spent. There are less than two years before the December 31, 2026 statutory deadline for all ARPA funds to be expended. I will say this city is currently on track to meet that deadline. However, the economic and political environment over the next 19 months is uncertain, and it is unpredictable. We do not yet know the impacts of tariffs, for example, on capital projects, nor do we know the federal government's disposition towards ARPA funding. I cannot pretend to know how all of this will unfold. If someone says they know how it will unfold, I question that. What I will say is that we are monitoring all ARPA projects carefully. We are thinking through our options, and we're communicating regularly with other leaders in city government. We will control what we can and continue to be responsible stewards of these funds. As you can see here, we have 48 grants that are fully expended. Many others are nearing full expenditure, and we are continuously monitoring and closing out grants as they reach those milestones. Next slide, please. We can stay here for a moment. The ARPA portion of this presentation is focused on city agencies with commitments greater than $10 million. All expenditure data is through April of 2025. And for the sake of time, I will provide highlights or provide further context about some of the data presented on each slide. Next slide. We'll start with the Department of Transportation. Thirty-two percent of this $13.1 million commitment has been spent. DOT issued a notice to proceed for the ADA Ramp Reconstruction in May, late August, and September of 2024, respectively, for the three relevant contracts. They are on track to spend this portion by summer 2026. For sidewalks, DOT experienced a procurement delay due to a bid protest. The sidewalk work began in March 2025. It is now progressing well, and DOT is on track to fully spend by spring 2026. Next slide, please. The Department of General Services, I'll highlight that they are using $3.4 million in ARPA funds for facility upgrades at multiple fire department facilities. Most of those projects are expected to be completed by June 25, with the remainder scheduled for completion by June 2026. Secondly, DGS is using $6.85 million in ARPA funds for the City Hall roof replacement. Construction is set to begin in June, and ARPA funds will be spent down first. Finally, DGS is working alongside Pratt Library to replace HVAC systems at six libraries using $10.8 million in ARPA funds. Construction has started at four of the six locations, and all are expected to be completed by fall of 2025. Next slide, please. I covered two of the projects here on the Department of General Services slide. I will note for equipment purchases of the $5.3 million budgeted for that area, most of the equipment has been delivered, and we expect all spend to be complete by December 2025. Next slide, please. For the Department of Public Works, 79% of this $15 million commitment has been expended. This funding supported a number of operating needs for DPW, including the purchase of load packers, 30 recycling crew positions during calendar year 2024, and a waste management contract. It is also supporting facility improvements at two locations. Note that there are significant funds within the city's CIP for major capital improvements at DPW facilities, $35 million total. Next slide, please. This portion of the DHCD budget includes initiatives aimed at eliminating and preventing We might have skipped past a slide, if you wouldn't mind going back. And while that's happening, I'll just say, two of the three home repair programs, hubs and healthy homes, have spent 60% or more of their budgets. The third, wealth building in middle neighborhoods, was the final of the three ARPA-funded repair programs at DHCD to launch. In addition to the $788,000 in spend as of the end of April 2025, there are 25 homeowners who have projects under construction or have approved scopes of work. In coordination with DHCD, we're continuing to monitor spend pace and the number of home repairs in the pipeline. And then I'll also highlight that for impact investment areas, spend has increased significantly. At this time last year, there was only $1.8 million in spend. That has increased to $8.3 million. So there's been significant spend on property acquisition, developer and homeowner incentives for renovation and repair, and stabilization and demolition. Next slide, please. For strategic capital investments within DHCD, the Uplands redevelopment is complete. For the $13.7 million investment in Park Heights redevelopment, all infrastructure funds have been spent. As I mentioned, there was a ribbon cutting for the senior housing building with 100 affordable units, and then ARPA is providing $1.2 million in funding for multifamily housing, and those funds are expected to be spent by the end of FY26. For the Tavoli Eco Village Project, a $1.18 million predevelopment subgrant to the developer is expected to go before the Board of Estimates for Approval in June 2025. This project, as many of you know, experienced delays due to HUD requirements attached to a $3 million non-ARPA federal grant. This included an environmental review and a review from the Maryland Historical Trust. Next slide, please. The Inspire 21st Century Initiatives, or excuse me, 21st Century Incentives, now known as the Middle Neighborhood Developer Incentive Program, provides up to $50,000 per eligible property to homeowners, organizations, or nonprofits for renovating formerly vacant homes in middle neighborhoods. I will note that there has been around $200,000 in spend there in the month of May, because our numbers are through April, it's not represented on the slide. And then I know that there are six developer agreements that are being prepared to go to the BOE in late summer, early fall of 2025. Next slide, please. For Clean Core, it has expanded. Last year, it expanded to reach more neighborhoods. Work crews continue to proactively complete cleaning and greening work, hauling trash, cleaning alleyways, and cleaning and mowing vacant lots. 164 Baltimore City residents have been employed through Clean Core thus far. Ninety-five percent of funds have been dispersed to the fiscal agent for this project, and we expect all funds to be dispersed and then expended on the ground by June 2026 or sooner. Next slide, please. For the food insecurity investment within the Department of Planning, the contract for produce boxes was recently extended. It's set to expire in December of 2026, so at the very, very end of ARPA. All other program areas in this investment are well on their way, and they're on track to be fully expended by the grant end date. Next slide, please. For the Health Department, several programs within the Health Department's commitment are completed, or they are nearing completion, for example, contact tracing and communications. ARPA also provided $2 million in funding for Be More Healthy Babies, for equipment purchases like diapers and cribs, also supported staffing and contractual costs. That spend is nearly complete, and the end date for that agreement is June 30, 2026. Next slide, please. For broadband and digital equity, 46 recreation centers and eight senior centers are connected to the city's broadband network, and they are now transmitting free, high-speed public Wi-Fi. All of the digital equity grants have been awarded, and then work continues to build out the infrastructure necessary to provide high-speed, affordable broadband access at a select set of HABC properties. That portion of the work is also being supported by funds from HABC and the state of Maryland. And then, as many of you know, ARPA is also supporting the deployment of new tax software that will replace an end-of-life legacy system and create new efficiencies for the Department of Finance. Next slide. For Recreation and Parks, by the end of the summer, very pleased to report that 89% of all ARPA-funded BCRP projects will be completed. The four remaining include the Greater Model Pool, gym at the Bocheck Recreation Center, Gardenville Recreation Center, and the Congressman Elijah Cummings Recreation Center. Construction is underway for all of those projects. For MOED, as you can see, this grant is almost fully spent. Most of the occupational skills training agreements under Train Up are scheduled to expire in June of '25. Remaining funds for youth works will be expended through summer 2025, and expenditures for higher-up through the MOED grant are nearly complete. The agreement end date is December 31, 2025. For MONC, for the group violence reduction line item here, spend against this portion of their budget has seen delays due to invoicing challenges from some of the partners and the timing of the final GVRS expansions. MONC is working closely with BPD and the administration to expand GVRS to the Southern District and thereafter to expand it citywide. For subsidized employment, all funds dedicated to returning citizens behind the wall will be fully expended. MONC is partnering with DOP to hire MONC participants into Clean Core, and then MONC and MOED are also working together to hire MONC participants in the Higher Up program, and they're leveraging the MONC budget for that rather than the MOED budget. Next slide, please. For MOHS, the Housing Accelerator Fund, this is a $17 million grant to support the development of permanent supportive housing. It is a partnership between MOHS and DHCD. It funds a set of four small predevelopment grants, nine larger capital projects to develop PSH housing units, and administration costs within DHCD. Drawdowns have started, and DHCD is in regular communication with the developers for the nine capital projects, and our office, in coordination with MOHS and DHCD, are monitoring progress and coordinating regularly. Next slide. For the Recovery Office, the ARPA portion of our work will end by June of 2027, once we've submitted the final report to Treasury in April of 2027 and completed all closeout activities. In addition to the daily work that our project managers do to engage with grantees and monitor their work, in coordination with consultants, we conduct in-depth monitoring and compliance activities, including site visits, document reviews, expenditure testing, staff interviews, and the like. And then finally, in FY26, our office will continue to support the work of standing up and administering grants to the named entities through the Opioid Restitution Fund. As we stand up this new grant program, we are working to implement best practices and lessons learned from ARPA for this set of investments. That includes adopting some of the processes, directly adopting some of the processes that we used in ARPA implementation, and for others, doing the thought work and collaboration necessary to adjust our processes, to improve what we've done in the past, and to meet the needs and objectives of this grant program. The Baltimore City Mayor's Office of Overdose Response and the Recovery Office are working very closely together to administer this fund. At the risk of oversimplifying our roles, BC Moore is focused on strategy and program design. Our office is focused on grants management and compliance. BC Moore is looking across all opioid restitution fund grants and activities to ensure alignment with the city's overall strategy. They also possess the subject matter expertise necessary to help inform program design and ensure that grantees are following best practices. MORP is responsible for the grant monitoring and financial oversight for grantees, and we're providing technical assistance for budgeting, development of the grant agreement itself, and then supporting grantees to ensure that they have the proper internal controls in place and continuing to provide the level of oversight that we have through ARPA. That concludes my presentation, and I am happy to take any questions.
Director Tatum, can you talk about some of the lessons that were learned during ARPA that you all will be applying to the opioid restitution fund? Can you just provide a few examples, please?
Certainly, happy to do that. So we are, some of the guidance that we have developed midway through implementation of ARPA, we now have at the very beginning of implementation of this grant program. For example, and this is very in-the-weeds sort of things, but it actually does matter, as you might understand, in the implementation of these grant programs. We have very detailed guidance on indirect costs. So how do you calculate those? What is an indirect cost? What are gray areas? We have materials and templates sort of at the ready to assist organizations. So we didn't have that at the beginning of ARPA. We had to stand that up partway through. We also have much stronger budget templates, for example, so that we have a much stronger way to understand allocation of full-time positions, and we're providing guidance at the very beginning about how to do time tracking and level of effort correctly, because we have seen that has been an issue with a number of our ARPA grantees. So those are some of the, again, technical grants management practices that we're looking
Thank you, Council President Cohen.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Thank you, Director. To pick up on that thread, the importance cannot be overstated of getting the processes right in terms of, this is going to be a competitive process, you're going to have winners and losers, the losers who do not get grants are not going to be happy. That is the challenge of distributing large amounts of money. This money is critically important. It addresses one of the most damaging and devastating elements in our city, which is opioid addiction. This money was hard fought. I cannot overstate enough the importance of making sure the processes are sound on the front end so that there is integrity, and even when groups get a no, that they understand why and are able to respond accordingly. My question, I've heard some concern among the opioid restitution board about a really small amount of money going out for this first round of RFPs, that the predominant first tranche has been consumed by either groups that were identified in the lawsuit, great, or agencies within the administration, and that those agencies did not have to apply in the same way that groups that are going to apply for, I believe, about $2 million are. Can you speak to how we are, in a future tranche, going to rectify that and make sure that more money is available for those groups that are doing recovery work, harm reduction, all the things that we know we need to improve outcomes for folks with addiction?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Council President. I will briefly comment about our FY26 budget, and then I'll ask DCA Kearney to add to my comments. The $2 million is within the BC Moore budget. It is not within our office's budget, and so we will work with BC Moore to develop the RFP process and to help to implement and run it, but from a strategy perspective, that question is probably more, I would encourage you to direct that to BC Moore. And I'll then ask DCA Kearney to...
Just for my own clarity, apologies. Can you say what BC Moore is?
Yes. Baltimore City Mayor's Office of Overdose Response. Yes, and there are three full-time staff within that office, including Director.
And so, just so that I understand, your office and how it interacts with that office, that is a whole separate office from your...
That's correct. Yes, it is. And so, I'll give you sort of a specific example of how our roles differ. As we are, as I shared in my comments, they're really focused on overall strategy and how does, how the contributions of city agencies, of named entities, of recipients of any competitive grant process, how those are helping to shift outcomes in the city. So for, in the development of the grant applications, their staff went out to complete site visits for some of our named entities and then prepared memorandums that indicated, in some cases, perhaps they're not following best practice around harm reduction, or there are questions about how some of their programmatic staff are operating. So they're looking at this with a public health lens and with expertise in this particular area. Our staff are looking at, what does your budget look like? What are your internal controls? We're looking at, we're doing risk assessments and the like. So it really is, again, at the risk of grossly oversimplifying things, it's really that BC Moore is the strategy arm, and then our office is really about grants management and compliance.
Turn on your mic. Second time for technical difficulties today. Third time I'm out. So if I could just comment on Director Tatum's last comment about the amount of funding that's available to external organizations this year, I want to clarify that using the term "rectified," assumes that something was done wrong, and that's not the case. There is $206.6 million that the city currently has that we've recovered and that we have in our coffers. I would also say that it was very important for us to ground any of our decision-making in the strategic plan, which we have not yet done. And so we want to make sure that the funding that we are making available to those entities that were not named in settlements align with our goals and what we're trying to do as a city to address the opioid pandemic, and to have put a lot of money on the ground that's not anchored in a strategic plan really would not have been the correct thing to do. So really, just wanted, for the record, again, say rectify is not the term I would use. It again implies that something was done wrong. As we do the needs assessment, as we complete a strategic plan, we will then use that information to help us decide what if any additional funds will go to some of our nonprofit partners. I would also note that it wasn't a requirement for us to give additional funds to nonprofit partners. That was a decision made by the administration outside of those that were included in the settlements, and so it is the administration's position that we want to partner with nonprofit organizations to help us address the opioid pandemic, but it was not a requirement.
Understood. Let me just be real clear on the feedback that I'm hearing, which is from members of the Opioid Restitution Board that are concerned that funds, not enough funds, are available to do the work. I hear you, Director Kearney, in that the administration wants to set out its strategic position. What I am seeking to illuminate, and I use that word intentionally, is that there is a, I believe, discrepancy between the expectations of the administration and members of the Opioid Restitution Board, for which I, as Council President, am now receiving feedback. And so, when I use the word "rectify," perhaps it is misaligned expectations that have not been clear enough to that board, but I think that folks signed up with the expectation that by now there was going to be direction, there was going to be a strategic vision, and that the dollars would then follow and that they would have some agency over where those dollars would go. I don't mean to infer that... I don't mean to infer that, that there shouldn't be a clear back and forth, and that the administration, and frankly, the council, shouldn't weigh in on this huge amount of money that we're able to recover. But I do think it's important that that feedback, which I've received from numerous members of that board, is reflected publicly, and that we are working to make sure everybody is on the same page.
Yep. And that's fair. And what I would say is, I will also illuminate and also say publicly that the expectations of the restitution advisory board, we have to work with them in order to properly deploy and adequately deploy the dollars that we've received. While there may be some concerns right now about $2 million, I don't know what the right number would be that would make everyone satisfied. I don't think it matters how much money we put on the ground. There would still be people who would feel a way about the fact that city agencies are receiving some of the opioid restitution funds, and there are some that believe that likely all of our dollars should go to our city partners, to our nonprofit partners. And so, while I understand here and recognize some of the concerns regarding the initial tranche, I again remain steadfast in the fact, and BC More would also agree, that too, it would have been irresponsible to put so much money out on the ground initially without having a strategic plan. And so, while I hear you on, people might have thought that the strategic plan would be done by now, what we've also talked about is the fact that we could do something quickly and wrong, or we can do it right and take the time that we need in order to make sure that we are efficiently and effectively deploying these resources. And so, I acknowledge and hear the concerns. I would just say that we should all want to make sure that these dollars are used in a strategic way, and that we are ensuring that we are achieving the goals that are identified by both the administration and the council. I believe that we all want to do better in how we address the opioid crisis that we have in our city.
On that, there's no argument. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I have two questions for the recovery side of things. One is, can you go, Director, can you go into a little bit more detail about what's happening with the Housing Accelerator Program? Why we're not seeing a lot of spend there? I know you went through it a little bit, but if you don't mind getting a little bit more detail, that would be super.
So, for the Housing Accelerator Fund, the bulk of those dollars are going towards nine capital projects. And some of those projects didn't have executed grant agreements until late in 2024. We are working on getting spend-down plans, milestones, and we're in regular discussion with the developers about when they expect that spend to occur. The other thing that I will say about capital projects in general is that there may be a month, or two, or even three, where there's no spend, and then there will be a big drawdown. So, it's more of a step function than sort of a, you know, an even, even slope on expenditures. I will say that MOHS and DHCD in our office are in very regular communication, both with each other and with developers, on the status of each of those projects and their, their ability and the timing of their spend.
And at some point, we'll get a list of what those capital projects are? Is that available somewhere?
It is available, yes. Yes.
Can we have?
Certainly.
Can you send that over?
Certainly.
Okay. And I'll write that up as a committee request. And I, related to spend, I'm very familiar with what's happening with the Tolu project, and am pushing extremely hard, as hard as I can, without making a lot of people mad, although I think I've already done that. So, the second question was about, just following up on our conversation at the hearing the other day regarding the vacant, the, it was the vacant positions hearing, but we had talked about, and then under your hearing, we talked about sort of all of the ARPA spend that had staffing associated. And I really appreciated the list that you sent us with the councilman's request. And I was curious, just to get a better sense, and I didn't print it out for myself, but I have it on my computer, get a better sense of what's happening with these positions. For instance, the Health Department, are those positions just going away? So, we're laying people off? Or are we redesign, we're strategically pointing them in other positions in city government?
So, I'll comment about the strategy broadly for the ARPA positions, rather than sort of focusing on an individual agency. So, from the start of ARPA, we have said very consistently that it is not possible to sustain all of these programs at the levels that we established them. It is not possible to sustain all of the staffing levels that we stood up. Some of this, many staff were hired specifically for ARPA-funded programs. Some of those programs are ending, or they're contracting substantially. So, that is a, that's a reality anytime we have a large infusion of funds in this way. So, with that being said, I know that there are some positions that have already transitioned to the general fund. There are also, agencies are looking at their current vacant positions and identifying, based on the skillset of the staff member, the fit of the person to the position, they're looking to see, can we put this person in an existing funded vacant position? And I would encourage you to have a discussion with the agency about where they're at in those plans. And then, the final option, which frankly, I do not think is a, a strong option, but it's always an option, is for an agency to submit an enhancement request during FY27. We know that the general fund has many demands placed on it. We know that federal fund, the federal funding and political environment is very different, but that is also an option. And I do think for agency-by-agency requests, I think it would be appropriate to direct that question to them.
Okay. Yeah, because some of these notes that you have here are that you're already coordinating with the agency. Some of them don't have any information on here. Some of them are already general funded. So, if I understand you correctly, it's really an agency-by-agency discussion. So, but although I could imagine that there are some people that, with a skillset, that could be used by another agency. And so, hopefully, that kind of interaction is also happening, because we want to see these positions filled. I also don't want to lay people off if we don't have to.
The other thing I'll say about our particular response is that, I was staying within the scope of the response, and I know the ask was about which staff are transitioning to the general fund-
Yes.
...in FY25. And since so many of those grants are not ending until FY26, that was, that was sort of the reason for the, the status as it's presented in the response.
Got it. Okay. So, we would need to just amend our request here, because it says transition to general fund or other grant in FY26, so this current budget that we're analyzing. So, if it has an NA next to it, either the position's going to be eliminated, or that's still a conversation for the '27 budget, basically.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we'll go agency-by-agency on these, and I appreciate you compiling this information for us. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Torrance.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I just have a brief question, because I'm looking at Slide 11, on elimination of, blight elimination and prevention with CTEP. I'm confused. Over $70,000 expended for demolition, rehabilitation, repairs, and developer incentives for vacant structures. CTEP is more so environmental design, not actual fixing of structures. So, I want to know, if possible, do you know what DCHD did with it? Because if we're talking about vacant structures, that means that are we creating clearer sightlines through multiple vacant homes? Are we increasing lighting in areas where we have large amounts of legal dumping? Are we looking at shrubs to keep people from loitering? Or, I'm just wondering, what are the, what was the actual investments?
Crime, crime prevention through environmental design, it sounds like you're very familiar with. It does include things like creating an environment that makes, that makes public nuisance or violence less likely or less probable, which includes things like lighting and fencing. I know that that is certainly a part of that investment, and where DHCD is spending funds. And they are also spending funds on renovation of, of vacancies and the like, with the idea that those investments are creating a different sort of environment and space for people to move through. And I would encourage you to, to speak with DHCD specifically about that program design, but I know it includes some of the components that you mentioned.
I'm happy that there's some type of investment from this, but when I had conversations with the administration last year about this, there was no chief agency in terms of crime prevention through environmental design, whether it was planning, or housing, or BPD. There was no update since the previous plan that was written in 2018. So, to see that housing has $2 million to actually invest in it without a coherent strategy worries me. So, ma'am chair, I would like to request for the committees, actually, expenditures, every expenditure made from that light item from DCHD, also a copy of their offer submitted plan for CTEP, in addition to that, and how they plan to expend it down. And I'd like to know where these projects are, because I'm wary that, CTEP done right, a simple project in Santan, Winchester, would just cost $2 million by itself, with lighting upgrades to just a conduit system. In addition to that, beautification, though, all those things cost, and $700,000 for developer incentives or repairs and rehabs. It just worries me, because easily, right now, the cost of a repair of a vacant in West Baltimore is easily between $160,000 to $180,000. So, that, these numbers don't match what I'm seeing. So, thank you, ma'am chair.
Councilwoman Torrance, run a request back by us, so we can make sure that we capture it. There were three parts to the request. Can you just repeat it, please?
Yes. So, I'll also put this in writing as well. Well, I would like to see the actual expenditures for CTEP, a copy of their actual plan. In addition to that, what is the, well, this is more so a philosophical question for the administration, from having previous conversations with them about CTEP, whether or not we have a cohesive plan around it, if we're talking about serious violence reduction and not just piecemeal through a $2 million investment. So, more broadly, one is, where do the expenditures are currently, a copy of the plan, and then a philosophical conversation about moving forward. And I would say in the next two weeks.
I'd also like to add an additional point there, and thank you for your question, Councilwoman Torrance. This is a pilot program, so it was designed as a, as a pilot from the beginning, and that's part of the reason for the, the dollar amount and the scope of that agreement.
I appreciate that context, but it's the, I need a true-up to understand whether or not this was truly a pilot, or just a way of just solidifying things in, like, the impact investment zones when the areas were difficult. I'm just being transparent, because there has been a lack of cohesion on certain things with DCHD and offer funding.
Okay. So, Councilwoman Torrance is requesting the information, within two weeks, is that doable for the administration or for your agency to provide those details?
Would it be possible for us to follow up with you, Councilman? Just to, so I can confirm with the team that we can get to in two weeks? If possible, we would like to, but I just want to confirm with the team.
If I can modify that, I would like the expenditures in the documents within two weeks. We can have the philosophical conversation after budget hearings, but I really want to see what the actual pilot is and what they spent the money on.
Understood.
So, you guys can deliver that information that he's requesting within two weeks?
We should be able to deliver the expenditures, for sure. The financial data.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Do we have any additional questions? Councilwoman Jones?
Just really quickly, with the offer, like you said, most of these programs are funded just until the money runs out. Is there conversations already happening regarding which ones may be moved into the general fund, and which ones haven't been? And kind of what's the determining factor on, you know, which questions, which programs may continue on? And the reason why I ask that is because there are programs like Clean Core that a lot of residents and people in the community would like to see continue on, and, you know, just, they have questions and just want to see how, how they can also be a part of the conversation on what they feel like has been important to that community.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Jones. What I will say is that for, for Clean Core specifically, I know that there are active discussions right now in the administration between DPW and DOP about how to potentially sustain that program going forward. And then, for, in terms of the continuation of other programs, as I shared earlier, we will not be able to sustain all ARPA-funded programs. It's simply not possible, particularly in the, the new environment that we find ourselves in since January. But I will say that there are, there are certainly discussions about what aligns with the city's priorities, what actually worked. And we have information, certainly from performance measures, from qualitative data, from information about sort of the speed and quality of implementation. We also are undergoing nine different program evaluations with the University of Baltimore, which will help us to identify which items worked and which did not. And so, we are providing that information and that insight to the administration, and will continue to communicate with the administration and also with the Budget Office about which initiatives might be sustained going forward and at what levels.
Thank you for answering that question. I would say, if there's any information, if any of that information you can share with us, I think we would all love to be a part of that conversation, if possible, because these are some questions, you know, our constituents and residents have as well. And we would love to provide feedback on what we feel like has been effective in our district as well. So, thank you. I appreciate it, and there's been a lot of good things that came out of that ARPA money, and we would, just like C Sim, continue the ones that can. So, appreciate it.
And, and thank you for, for that comment. And I will say, always happy to hear feedback, always happy to hear which programs have done well in your community, where you're seeing results, and happy to have that as an input.
Councilwoman Blanchard.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Sideburn on great programs, buy back the block. So, just throwing that out there. The, something that I haven't really understood in talking about, the, the 15-year plan for the, the opioid recovery fund. Why is it a flat amount across 15 years? I would think it would make, it being a crisis, it would make more sense to, to front-load that. What was the decision to evenly distribute it out? Because hopefully, right, the years, seven, eight, nine, 10, you know, through 15 are going to, we're going to have less of a need, because we will have effectively addressed it.
I would encourage you to, to direct that question to the Budget Office, which developed the 15-year plan. What I, what I will say from, from my seat is that these are, it is early days for the opioid restitution fund, and it is hard to predict precisely the amounts that we will need in each of those 15 years. Doing 15-year planning is, is really difficult. And so, I know that as these programs stand up, as we're starting to see results, as we're seeing what, what works, what doesn't, what needs are within city agencies, and then how our nonprofit partners are delivering, I know that there will be consistent revisiting of those projections and that plan for 15 years.
Okay. That's good. I mean, that's good to know. And it makes sense that, probably doesn't make sense to actually put all the money on the, the very first year, because we don't know exactly what works yet. But the, the opposite idea of spreading that out, I think, delays a lot of the, especially with the federal government cuts to all the types of programs that are going to be critical to ending the crisis as well. So, thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Director Tatum, thank you to you and your team. We're going to be ending here and we will be back at 6:00 PM for the Department of Public Works.